Okay. To call this regular meeting, Grand Forks City Council to order. And first item of business is the agenda. We have a couple of additions as late items. One is the Wildlife Program 12A and the other will be 12B. The trails presentation by Chris Moaz. I think that's it to the adjustments. And I'll call for a motion to adopt the agenda as modified. Councillor Horschag and Councillor O'Doherty, all those in favor. And we have two sets of minutes. July 24th, regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt? Councillor O'Doherty, seconded by Councillor Smith. All those in favor.
About June?
Sure. July 8th, 2013, special meeting minutes. Motion to adopt. Those are all of them. Councillor O'Doherty, Councillor Smith, all those in favor. And we have no petitions or delegations. Break this down to the members of council. And we'll start. How about Councillor Horschag looking hot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have no reports. I was just going to mention a couple of things that we spoke more lately today. And so therefore, it's not a report. So I have nothing.
Okay. And Councillor O'Doherty.
You know, Sir Worship, I attended with yourself and Councillor Smith. Councillor carried a fire at the Canada Day Parade. It was a nice parade. Lots of people at the park. I'm happy to see that. And I went to the park hall to open house for the new fire truck. And I met a lot of people there. It was good turnout and everybody seemed to be happy. The way it was set up. And I've been attending the two nights of music in the park. And then there's been a big crowd there two nights. And it's on Wednesday night, every Wednesday night at seven o'clock until the end of August. And the parks are all in good shape. Camping grounds are in good shape. And I want to thank the staff from the members of the union of the city work yard for the wonderful jobs they did downtown and on Riverside for that beach. And every great job they did.
Excellent. And that's my report, Sir Worship. Thank you very much, Councillor. Councillor Wires.
Are we using these in work?
We're not. Not tonight, anything.
Okay, thank you, Worship. I'll start my report with the open house I attended for, well, I guess it was an introduction to the upgrades that they're doing for the new location of Habitat for Humanity and Whispers of Hope.
Oh, yeah.
And yes, you went over there too. And that was on June 27th. Whispers of Hope, Habitat for Humanity and...
Bass.
Bass, thank you. Boundary Emergency Transition Housing. Thank you very much. And I got there a little late, so I had a private tour. And I'm very pleased to see the progress that they're making right now.
Very nice.
So it's going to be a compliment, I believe, to our community to provide this type of social structure for citizens in our community that requires assistance. And Canada Day Parade, yes, we were all there for the Canada Day Parade and the festivities in the park. I actually assisted with the Citizens on Patrol float. And we were very pleased to be recognized with the first place ribbon for entry, the youth in the community theme. So we held a recent meeting and we're not going to be in the Fall Fair Parade.
No.
We're going to give everybody else a chance to get first place. We're going to be entering a booth in the exhibition hall this time. So we're going to concentrate on recruitment. So that was a nice compliment from the organizers. And I wanted to thank them for, and compliment them for, the great work that they're doing on our parades in our community. Because every parade is getting bigger and bigger, longer and longer. And it's a lot of work. Been there. So my final, oh, and I've been volunteering at the Grand Forks Dukaburra Heritage Milling Society out on Mill Road. They have entered an agreement of the Founder Museum Society and the Milling Society have entered into an agreement to see the flour mill up and operating once again. So the wheat has arrived. The bin is containing about a ton of wheat right now. They hope to be milling by the end of July. And we already have quite a list of orders from pretty much across the country because people have been driving by and seeing the activity around the mill and thinking that they're already up and operating. So there's...
That's pride of the valley.
The Pride of the Valley flour is very, very popular. And so what I learned was the whole wheat is actually the whole kernel. They use the outside bran and the wheat germ inside. Whereas white flour, they extract the bran from the kernel and remove the wheat germ. So white flour, white bread, is very little nutritional value.
We know that. Underbread.
I didn't know that. Because I never... And finally, I wanted to let everyone know that the next environment committee meeting will be on Thursday, August 15th, at the Regional District Coonie Valley Boardroom at 11 o'clock till 1:00. Up and coming will be the Grand Forks Flying Association Copa Flight 62 Airport Appreciation Day, supported by council and the city of Grand Forks. And it'll be a show and shine. We have the evening before, we will be, there'll be posters out to welcome our young people in the area, in the community, everyone actually, out to runway theater presentation of Top Gun at dusk. And it will be introduced by a former Top Gun Sabre Pilot retired in our community and holds the key to our community, Jacques MacKay, is a former Top Gun Sabre Pilot. So he's going to be giving a presentation for the Top Gun movie. Founder Museum Society will be selling popcorn, that's their fundraiser at our event. And the Air Cadets Squadron 841 will be selling water and pop. So that'll be runway theater the night before for any early arrivals.
That's great.
We got the idea from the Arlington Air Show. They have a runway theater. We're going to do it up here first.
Excellent.
And finally, I noticed a sign up at the GFI Park, James Olson Park. There's a sign saying June 25th to June 30th, the Grand Forks International in 2014.
Oh, they picked a new date.
The sign's there right now, the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're talking with their regular sign. So that was good to see. They're planning again. Yep. A year from now, we will have, the GFI will be back.
In June. That is fairly good.
June 25th to the 30th. So that's a new date. Should be a good turnout with the children just out of school too. So that's my report for this evening, and I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Worship. My report is going to start back June 11th, as I missed the June 24th council meeting as Councillor Smith and I were attending the economic conference in Vancouver. On June 11th, I attended the monthly meeting of the Founder Museum Society. June 17th, I attended a meeting of the Gilpin Grasslands Group to discuss a working relationship to work cooperatively with the Grand Forks ATV Club, future endeavors in the Gilpin Grasslands. And that's an ongoing discussion. June 18th, I attended the monthly meeting of the Founder Chamber of Commerce. Really endorsed a new ambassador program which we're going to be meeting tomorrow to hopefully get the groundwork in place to start that for the community. It's a big and exciting new project. June 19th, I attended the city of Grand Forks Strategic Plan Review with the rest of council at the Founder Museum. June 20th, I went with the Founder Museum and Venture Brand Forks where they formalized the joint venture for the Heritage Welcome Center. The center is being very well received and I believe it shows how the cooperative efforts in our community can show great success. It's a really great thing to see how it works. July 1st, I attended Canada Day activities along with the rest of council. And Councillor Smith and I had the privilege of cutting several hundred pieces of cake and passing it out to the community. And finally, Councillor Smith and I are going to do a co-report on our Economic Development Association of BC Conference. And it was a four-day conference and I'm going to kind of turn it over to Councillor Smith to do the main one, and then we're going to alternate days.
That's the Bop Gary Show. First initiative, Bop Gary Show. So let's begin by saying that the that conference was by far one of the most educational events that certainly we've ever attended in our term here. It was great to be amongst, basically it was EDOs. We were the only two politicians, basically, in the whole conference. So these are people that are hired by their communities to perform the function of economic development. And it was great. It was just, it was awesome to be welcomed so open, armed by these folks. It was great. So day one began with a new membership meet and greet, where we met the President Dale Wheaton and the Chair Jeff Miller, along with all the new members to the association. We began an impromptu critique of our city brand logo and tagline with members of the EV ABC, which continued throughout the conference. And everyone thought all aspects of the brand were great, including members of other marketing companies like Twist that did Nelson branding in other communities in our region. Some very, very positive feedback, just in terms of how we kind of stood out amongst, you know, the efforts of all these other communities who always have mountains and rivers and trees and stuff like that. So the black and white thing was just great. And our efforts were very positively received and speak well about the direction our city's going. The ability to be in the same place with many provincial government representatives of various ministries, as well as the EDOs from all over the province, was a definite advantage to gaining valuable knowledge in the ongoing economic development initiatives facing on. On to you, Bob.
Day two. The keynote speaker of the day was the new Minister of Tourism, Minister Bond, who spoke about the province's commitment to economic development and $800 billion in funding to that endeavor. The BC Jobs Plan and Business Attraction Toolkit were two recent initiatives for communities to use in furthering economic initiatives. Panel presenters spoke about important BC economic sectors such as Destination BC, which is a $4 million advertising campaign. And part of the plan is to produce videos to promote BC to markets around the world. Another panelist spoke of the importance of water, which is a huge thing brought forward to city council here. Seventy percent of all fresh water is used for land-based agriculture, and efforts are being made to reduce water usage while maintaining production levels. The final panelists spoke of the priority of the government to find ways to increase the number of women involved in science and technologies as the numbers have been decreasing. Where is BC going from here? Some interesting facts from the conference was that China's growth rate is cooling to an annual rate of 7%.
It's been double digits for the last few years, so that's a significant...
The GDP growth in Canada is 1.9%, and BC is expected to be 2%. BC's unemployment at the present time is slightly higher than expected, and new jobs are leveling off. The US housing market is on the rise, and Canada is expected to follow, and this should be good news for BC's economy. Advantage BC informs companies about tax incentives for business in BC. And it's interesting to learn that we have a very competitive tax system. It's a point of going back to having two taxes, which are still very competitive in the world market. Ignite BC is another presentation. It's a government-sponsored film tourism initiative. Presenters spoke about how and where to access information on selling to provincial and federal governments. They also spoke about agricultural initiatives, as well as where we can promote ourselves to the Canadian manufacturers and exporters association. So a ton of information is provided at these things. Being able to speak to the ministers and representatives from these various places and having their business cards and being able to access, I think, is a really powerful thing. One of the most interesting programs we discovered is the Provincial Nominee Program. This program is where communities can apply to make a presentation to a group of pre-qualified foreign investors who have personally paid to attend to hear these pitches. Now, these people are here looking for opportunities to purchase existing businesses in BC. Ninety percent of these nominees stay in the province once they've purchased a business. And there are up to 120 entrepreneurs per month, and 50% have a million or more dollars to invest in BC. Eighty percent of these are Chinese, and most of the rest are from Europe, Korea, and India. We have a rare opportunity to meet the provincial business development managers, and these are provincially employed people from all over the world, and to tell them about our great city and area. The information will be available in most embassies in Europe and is being promoted throughout many parts of the world. The opportunity, should we choose to accept it, is there is, for Grand Forks, an area to make plans and apply to be part of this exciting opportunity. Venture Grant, Cam Loops, found that promotional video was a key factor in these presentations. And there's just a huge opportunity for us, if we choose to go that way, to promote business in the area to pre-qualified foreign investors.
And in many respects, it's like a dragon's den, but better. Because these guys, they want to invest. It's not like they're kind of hanging back one.
And they're fast-tracked, the government fast-tracks them with their...
Their visas and...
Yeah, with their visas and stuff. So it's an exciting opportunity that we choose to go that way to do it. And that was day two.
And this program, as it turns out, has been around for 10 years. So, you know, too bad, so sad that it's taken us this long to kind of get into it. But, you know, just from the conversation we had amongst the people there and the representatives of this program, it's something that we can really sink our teeth into and take advantage of. So day three, the keynote address was by a fellow named Dave Rendell. And he did a presentation called "The Freak Factor." And it was very interesting in that it showed how important it is to be different, freaky and quirky and unique in your own way. Because, yeah, like that fellow right over there. Because, you know, if you're going to do the same thing that everyone else is doing, well, you're going to be seen as the same as everyone else is. So, and, you know, Councillor Campbell and I thought it was great that the outcome of our branding exercise was something that was different and quirky and a little freaky that, you know, we have an opportunity to take advantage of that, and people will look at us in a different way. The things people are looking for when they're considering to make our move are not going to be someone that is the same as where they already are. They want something new and exciting and unique. So it's very important to embrace being different. Celebrated and promoted and promoted, normal.
Is blase.
The presenter spoke about foreign direct investment, and the provincial government is working to help all the information individuals may want, all in a user-friendly format, to provide a one-stop shop for investment in BC. The new, what's the name of the new website? Through Making the Connection.
The... Maps species, I think.
Yeah. So anyway, the new website will integrate all the information, it's like a GIS, and it's going to integrate all the information from all existing websites already put out by the provincial government and make it accessible off a single site. It's just, we saw an example of it, and it was just fantastic. It will be an integrated map of everything in BC that you want to know. But later that day, we participated in, it was a session put on by Talisman Energy, where we had an opportunity to make a pitch. So several teams were set up. Bob and I made sure that we were on different teams just to keep it spread around. So basically, it was a dragon's den pitch. They gave us a scenario of a community, a small community in BC, where there were several opportunities to make a community investment and make a plug to get partnerships. And Talisman Energy and this other company come and put some money into it. And as it turned out, my team won. And the prize for that was a $500, you know, gift certificate sort of thing for any community project that I and council decides to put it towards. Yeah. So that was a very, very cool thing. And it was great to do because, you know, in terms of the P&amp;P program where, again, you're there trying to make a pitch, it was, you know, trying to, trying to make a pitch where you're making three points very succinctly and directly, and not a lot of gloss and all that kind of stuff, just to, just to make a message across. It's dragon's den, totally. So it was, it was very good to get a couple of those lessons out of there. Another session that happened there was about 10 trends that are changing the future. One of them was greening, which of course, everyone knows that, you know, green buildings and climate change and energy and use and all that kind of stuff. Graining was another trend, of course. So the life expectancy in a city of people in 1913 was from 50 to 55, men and women. In 2013, it's gone to 76 in men and anyone and women. And right now, they say if you live to 60, you have a 3% chance of living to, guess what?
Hundred.
Hundred and twenty. They figure the advances in medicine are advancing that quickly that by the time we, well, I mean, you make me proud, Sir Worship.
It'll throw off those...
You're younger, you are, if you can live to 60 now. Chances are you're going to make a little further. You know, the trends in, you know, more people have cell phones than they do have toilets is another interesting fact. I mean, the idea of this 10 trends was to sort of get some groundwork of the changes in the past to verdict changes in the future. So it was, it was a very interesting hour. And one of the, a couple of other things that I learned here was, you know, the trends who were informing. 3,000 books are published a day. 100 billion Google searches are done a month. Tech info is doubling every year. And, you know, you've seen the TED Talks, those things people can get off of learning for free nowadays. So you can learn about all this stuff without having to attend even. The automation thing is lawyers now, you can go online and get legal Zoom, so you can get legal advice online without actually seeing a lawyer. Accountants, TurboTax, doctors, WebMD, and anyone in the world now can be replicated by my cyber twin.
Your cyber twin?
Oh, your cyber twin. Very, it's crazy stuff. We're talking about growing as well, that India currently has about 127 billion people. And they're, they're producing 2,740 babies an hour. China has 1,135 billion, 1,860 babies an hour. USA is about 350 million, they got 480 babies an hour.
England just had a new one too.
Yeah, I heard about that. Eight pounds, six ounces, I hear. It's a debate over the name will be ongoing. And also with the last, one of the big factors too is how technology is accelerating. So the time it took for 50 million users of the phone was 75 years. Radio, 38 years. The television, 13 years. Internet, four years. It's like on an exponential scale that it's taking less and less amount of time for the world to have access to all this information. And the very last fact was that more households have pets than they have children. And that is that.
And that brings us to day four. This is short. Keynote speaker was Clem's Reach. And it was, his topic was on small business script for the 21st century. The message was simple in that business needs to create an experience and focus on retaining customers. The message that the world today is fundamentally different than 20 or 30 years ago, and therefore business needs to adapt and operate in new and creative ways. And this applies to the business of municipalities as well. We need to create an experience, and we need to focus on retaining the customers, which are citizens in our communities. And just to close, I think Councillor Smith and I both would like to thank council for giving us the opportunity to go to this conference, and we believe that in the future, the knowledge gained and the many valuable contacts we've made, friendships started, it's certainly be a long-term benefit to the community.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. And Councillor Campbell, did you have more individual...
No, I'm done.
...input? Councillor Crowe?
It'll be short. We'll start on day one. Along with a lot of other members of council, I attended the open house for the fire department and looking at media. It was really laid out well. They had all the information there for the public. It seemed really positive. So I think that was good. The others, an update on the upcoming Fall Fair, which is, yeah, 25th, well, 23rd today. The 25th, there's a couple of things that are different. They're planning on having a gentleman come that will demonstrate how to make rope. He's going to do a bunch of short little sessions and stuff. I don't know, I didn't know people actually made rope anymore, so I thought that was kind of good. They're planning on a large silent auction. They've been setting up information booths at the farmer's market. And the farmer's market's been going really strong. It's, there's a fair amount of people there. I usually am there, you know, dropping off stuff Tuesdays and Fridays and stuff. And just the amount of booths, the amount of tourists that come through. Talked to people from Montreal last Friday, I guess. Yeah, and a lot of people coming through, and they're really interested in the town, so you get to promote a little bit as you go. The, let's see, so they're doing that. They are having a car show. And on Saturday, they're going to be sharing Aboriginal culture through songs, stories, drums, crafts, that type of thing. There will be a children's area. And to answer the mayor's question from a week or two ago, yes, the new chuck wagons are coming. And for the kids, they have Gary Vatic, he's a mad hatter. I don't know, interactive stories and songs. And the other big draw, I guess, is Uncle Chris the Clown. To me, it sounds scary. I have issues with clowns. And... Uncle Chris the Clown. As long as he's not a prison clown, we're fine. Okay. For entertainment, they've got a huge, huge roster. They've got Amanda Thake coming with a lot of other friends with her, so yeah. Couple of young singers and I have their names, so I'm not sure if anybody would know them, but Mike Sanishun and Tiana de Fevre, Sanishun, so I'm assuming they're related. And Brad Daritz and others. And another local band that does all their own original music, and that's Carson Highway. And the other awesome thing, Mini Donuts. That's a hit. Oh, Stonebowl was a big band in the 70s, 80s. I don't know, they've been on American Bandstand and the Late Night Wolfman Jack Show. How old is everybody? But... They're, they're going to be performing there as well. And they're still looking for volunteers, right? And if anybody's interested, I don't have a con... And if anybody's interested, I don't have a contact phone number, but I have the email. And it's Fall Fair 2012. I know it's, I double checked it wasn't that type of, it's still Fall Fair 2012 at yahoo.ca. So they would like, last I heard, you know, it'd be awesome to get like another certain people. But I, I think that the new president, Jason Kyber, and the, the new board is actually doing an excellent job. So it should be quite well run this year. And that's about it.
And there is a parade and we are looking at the possibility of being in it at a couple of.
Yes, yes, yes. And you guys were talking stagecoach.
Well, and we're leaving that for discussions before we go too far here because the complication is horses.
Yeah. Well, counsel can pull the bat.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counsel Krog. Counsel Smith.
Thank you, worship. A couple of things on the June 11th, I had the privilege of attending the cadet review. So that was a very, very cool ceremony they put on. I remember being there many, many years ago myself and, you know, just sort of good personal qualities that it taught me back then certainly apply now in my, most of my current behavior.
You begin the politics.
But no, it was, it was very good to, you know, to celebrate the fact that these young people have, you know, engaged themselves in, you know, benefiting and, you know, basically growing up, I guess, and learning the skills that they're going to foster and use in their future careers. On just a last beat there, I attended the downtown merchants, so Grant Forks Downtown Merch Association meetings. And right now, they're, we've sort of formed a few subcommittees. One of them being a second meeting to look at the actual formalization of a business improvement association and developing some, some ideas that they can take to the city. And this is in, working with Peter Power Pelkin, who currently holds a society, BIA society license or society, whatever, that we can work with and, you know, potentially bring to the city so that we can get a BIA going. Another one is to look at working with the city on the next phase of revitalization projects that might go on. So they're looking at some specific items that they would like to see addressed, including perhaps a heritage aspect that may come through the EDAC committee. And a couple of events that are coming up is on August 9th. They're going to be doing the Wild West Day, which is going to be on that Friday, August 9th. The Market Avenue is going to be closed down all day for that event. There will be vendors, there's going to be all kinds of events. Emergency services will be there to showcase some of their equipment. So, and trial activities. So it's going to be a whole day long event. So we're encouraging everyone to come out and be a part of it. If there's any volunteers, feel free to get ahold of me.
The date again was?
August 9th.
August 9th.
Yeah. Also on August 18th is the Chevelle Beaumont Car Show. It's not limited to Chevilles Beaumonts. There's actually upwards of, you know, 50 plus vehicles that are going to be in attendance with 100 to 150 participants. Again, Market Avenue will be closed and we're encouraging the farmer's market to come up there and participate. The car show itself will be down in City Park. That's on the Sunday. There'll be some music going on there and all kinds of activities. So we're encouraging people to come up. And then on the 25th, of course, is the Airport Fly-in and the Fall Fair. And again, we're hoping, I know some vendors of the farmer's market are planning to go up to the airport, but others we're encouraging to come down onto Market Avenue. And then we're going to have a shuttle bus that, just as it happened last year, we're going to basically connect the dots. So have a regular shuttle service that's running from the fly-in to Market Avenue to the Fall Fair and just keep that circuit open to make this a community wideband. And that's my report.
Thank you. Did you want to mention the presentation? And how did we dispose of that presentation by Urban Systems this morning? That was a recommendation that we proceed with, looking at that development of a, of a plan for the business development for tax exemption.
We can bring that forward on the August 9th meeting if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, because that will just allow everybody the opportunity to digest it.
Okay, but certainly supportive of everything that you're doing.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Counsel, I, I don't have anything more to add than what's been put forward, other than to congratulate the organizers of the provincial BMX championships this past weekend that took place. I don't know if any of you took in any of that event, but there were people all over town from the BMX crowds. So well done for that. And I'd like a motion to accept council reports, Counsel Doherty, Counsel Smith, all those in favor. In the regional district, let me concentrate my attention at this point on something that you did bring up, that there are more pets than children these days in people's households. The regional district is proceeding with a plan to reestablish the service that has been shut down for the last month. And we discussed that earlier today in different forums. And Counsel Smith has a suggestion in terms of a motion that would direct the mayor's activity in terms of that choice or that decision by the regional district coming forward on Thursday. So this has to do with animal control.
Right. Thank you, thank you, your worship. I would like to make, make a motion that the Grant Forks City Council encourage the implementation of a revised animal control bylaw before signing an animal control contract for service.
And a second for that, Counsel Doherty. Opening it to discussion. Is there any misunderstanding at this point of the position we're in? We may or may not be able to hold back that, that particular decision, but I think, given the importance that we see in terms of having a modern, up-to-date animal control contract in the city, that we need to try and slow down that process to encourage them to understand that we're buying a service. We want to know what the rules are going to be. And the current bylaw is, certainly has fallen out of favor and there are a lot of improvements that are being suggested by various groups and organizations, so.
And to, to just mention the fact that so many people have waded in to this discussion with the suggestions on improvements, that I think it's necessary for council to hear what the people are saying in our region about animal control before, before making a decision on what, what the service is going to be.
Right. So what I'm saying to council is I would, I'll go forward with that. I agree 100% with the position that council is taking and have expressed that before to the group. But I think it's important that we hold the line on this and express our concern that we set the rules before we hire the service. A motion on this matter, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. And that's my report. Can I have a motion to accept regional district report, Counsel Doherty, Counsel Rorschagn, all those in favor? Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, can we get the motion repeated so the corporate officer can make sure she passes along?
Thank you. Perfect. Next item of business is the CAO Brand Management Plan. Council considered to adopt a brand management plan as presented. Again, the committee of the whole met this morning and determined to recommend to this regular meeting that we adopt the brand management plan as presented. So I would accept that as motion, Counsel Smith, seconded by Counsel Kendall, and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I know that it's repetitive because you have expressed your concerns earlier today.
Yeah, and I'm actually not going to always go and mention that I did vote in favor of bringing it forward today. But however, I will be voting against it. And without going into my 30 minutes field I did this morning, I have many, many reasons as, as to why I.
Yeah, and just to summarize that, it's to, to add more content and specificity to the whole plan that, that we are assuring you that we'll develop over a period of time. So very reasonable request by Counsel Rorschagn that we, we look at crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on the plan. All right, ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? We have two oppositions. Do you wish to?
Yes.
The next item of business is the Development and Engineering Request for an Amendment to City of Grand Forks Zoning Bylaw 1606, 1999. Again, this is basically to do with the Wildlife Hall, changing the zoning from R4 to R3. That's the understanding. To allow them to operate the church that they're planning to operate within that zoning, but still leaves it long-term as multifamily. Are you reading this document?
Yeah. Got to get a point.
Making the motion, Counsel Smith, second, Counsel Rorschagn. And discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And the next item of business is for a site exemption on a setback. The proponent is Mr. Neil Gillespie. And what we're looking at on the right-hand side is a setback that moves from 100 feet to 60 feet is being recommended by staff as per the written recommendation. Counsel Rorschagn, Counsel Wires. Discussion? Counsel Rorschagn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the document says a 60-foot setback, well, to reduce it from 100 to 60 feet. Now, looking at the drawing here, that looks to me like it's 92 feet. That's the actual river. That's the actual river, not the high water mark? No. Okay. That's a serious one. Yeah, absolutely.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? Your worship.
There was an item under the brand management plan that I accidentally forgot to bring up. And I wonder if we disagree with that.
Yes, certainly, go ahead.
Okay. Under the brand management plan and through discussions with the EDAC, we had, we had, council had previously allocated $10,000 towards the video production.
Yes.
That is one of the recommendations and suggestions out of the brand management plan. And I would like to make a motion that we proceed with, or direct staff to proceed with developing a video, or videos for promotional Grant Forks under that plan with the brand management brand as the guiding principle.
Right. And a second for the motion, Counsel Kendall. We'll have to define that a little better. Mr. Allen, could you help us?
Sure.
The words behind that.
Yeah, I think the development of the videos that, in conjunction with the brand management plan would be, the idea, now when this idea was originally put forward, there was an auction for five different two-minute videos. The terms of reference for this would be developed and we would have to go for pricing on this and develop the, develop the videos in the terms of reference for the creation of videos. One of the things we're going to have to determine is variation, production, what are they, what are they going to replicate based on the brand manager plan? So, but at the end of the day, the, the resolution could read along the lines of staff being directed to develop the videos in conjunction with the brand management plan within the current budget of allocated.
Okay. And to mover and second, you agree with that?
Yes.
On the floor, Counsel Rorschagn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not the same motion that Counsel Wires called myself against previously.
Some meetings back?
Yeah, that I'm looking at right now.
We did approve at some meetings back that we would set that money aside, but we hadn't, we hadn't triggered the actual production of the movie, of the video.
And Mr. Mayor, that was when the, it was, it was, the council approved 10,000 would be set aside for the city's 2013 budget and the development of promotional videos for the city of Grand Forks subject to the planning and research regarding the actual cost and the reporting back to council prior to going forward with the project. So what we're doing is moving it forward now to the process of doing that to where the brand management plan is placed.
Right.
So now we need to get the next step to be done.
That's my understanding. And so Counsel Rorschagn speaking to the motion.
I will against the motion once again.
Yes, and do you want to explain yourself?
Well, for the same reasons before, number one, I don't think that plan's a plan at all. Secondly, we're talking about $10,000. But that's, that's quite a large portion of money considering the amount that we typically find in two committees. And this is above and beyond that. And we're looking at $10,000 to $15,000 on page one of this plan, manager plan that's just been approved. Let's be, if a lot of it, once again, there's, what does $10,000 look like? I, I, how do you get to $10,000? Why that number? I don't know. Why can't we do it for less? I think, I think I personally don't know. I have never shot a movie, never made a movie. I don't know how much it costs for editing, for this, for that. And why can't we have that information in front of us just before we start making decisions on, on spending money once again?
Counsel Smith, or actually Counsel Krog, in the same first.
Yeah, I, I voted against it previously. And my rationale is, in some ways, $10,000 is a lot of money. But in this realm or this area, it's not. Like it can be gone like that. So my concern is, if you're going to do something, you have to do it right. You can't, and personally, I don't think it's enough money if that's the goal that you're trying to achieve. So my concern is that this is it. We go out, we get what we get as opposed to, you know, maybe more detail. And that would be maybe justification to do it correctly the first time.
Okay, Counsel Smith, maybe speaking to the issue of the 10,000 being enough.
Right, right. Your worship, I've done, you know, a fair amount of research on this to see and get some recommendations on, on what it is we can expect to get, how much that would cost. And talked to a professional production studio where, you know, that is really kind of a ballpark figure. And that's how we came up with that number initially when we came to council to ask 10,000 for promotional videos. And that was based on that information. You know, over the past few months now, we've kind of fleshed that out to see what the breakdown is and kind of fleshed it out a little bit more and, you know, really to get what we want. And there's metrics behind it to support using it. Venture Camloops, they recently did some video. We heard all kinds of talk from EDOs at the conference there who supported video as a, as a principal medium for getting your, your message, your community's message out there. You know, I think the stars are lining up, you know, and, you know, there's an opportunity to take advantage of it for this cost.
You have some technology moving forward as well. It gives you production costs. So I, I believe that it is sufficient myself. Counsel Wires.
Well, I have spoken against this only because I feel, once again, we're putting a cart before the horse. $10,000, I agree with Counsel Krog. I just feel that it's money that's not going to go. You could produce something for $10,000, but it's going to cost you $150,000 to get it out there. That's my, where my position is. And that's, that's how I feel right now. I just feel that even with the, the marketing overview for... right now. I just feel that even with the the marketing overview for the branding plan, I just feel that it was just I've heard it all before. Like, it's there was nothing that jumped out at me to say, yeah, we've got one thing we can really grab onto here. And that's what I want to hear. It's kind of like going to the Economic Development Conference. I wanted to hear one thing that really jumped out.
Actually, I heard it.
Okay.
It's the same group you said it was, FCM.
Counselor Rorschach.
Yeah, well, just in regards to Counselor Wires and the whole the the plan, I heard it all before. It was because you have, this is the same plan that was put in front of us from the regional perspective, just a couple words were changed from regional district to Grand Forks. That's why you heard it before, because it's the exact same plan. I'm not opposed to a video. I'm in the same bill as Counselor Krog and Counselor Wires. I'm not opposed to it. There's no detail, once again. It's very generalized. Calcebar made a video. It costs $100,000 to put that video in YVR. What's the payback? Do they know? Do we know? So, for us to produce a video for $10,000, $20,000, $30,000, that's one thing. But it's going to cost a whole lot more to do something with it. What are we going to do with it? How much is that going to cost?
Thank you. And bringing things to closure, Counselor Smith.
Well, I think there's a there's some opportunities that aren't very costly. For instance, these videos could be part of our website. It could also be part of our social media aspect in promotion to the city. If we're going to take perhaps advantage of the provincial nominee program, these are pitch videos. I think there's lots of opportunity to get some legs on this thing without it actually costing $150,000 to get the message out beyond the $10 that we spent on it. The fact is, council already approved $10,000 based on previous arguments and on recommendations of the EDAC community. So, I just want to see this fall through.
Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Counselors. Recording your vote, yes, thank you. All right, and we're back to where we should have been in the Bellamy Development Variance Permit. So, David in Hyacinth Bellamy, property owner of that 6369 12th Street, requesting a variance. We have a recommendation from staff on the right-hand call. Counselor Doherty, Counselor Kendall, discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried.
So, that this means that was carried, that the variance is in effect, as I couldn't do discussion on it or anything? That's why I showed up, but it was already approved. Has it been already approved?
If we had argued it, we would have you would have said something.
Oh, okay.
Are you the landowner, sir?
I live just two doors over.
Right.
And this is going to be a shop, but how high it's going to be, but it's going to be made out of cargo containers, and I'm going to be staring at it from my front yard all the time.
Okay, hold on a second. This is getting out of the ordinary, but can I ask Mr. Allen advice on this matter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to speak to it or?
Well, I'm just wondering, is this a public hearing issue?
This wasn't a public hearing issue. This was a development variance as presented in the in the report. The manager of Development Services can speak to the content of which will be the expectations for the order to have these within another facility. So, Counselor, do you have the details on that?
It's going to be two containers.
Yeah, they're supposed to be enclosed, two containers enclosed in a facility. So, they basically they'll perform they'll form the structure of the inside of the facility, but these will be within a structure, another structure.
So, sir, we didn't require a public hearing on this, but if you want to stay after the meeting this evening and talk to?
Because I was sent a letter saying if I wanted to, I thought it was going to be discussion, I was sending a letter saying I could show up at the meeting.
Okay.
There's a letter here saying about showing up at the at the meeting. So, that's what I'm doing, and now it's just automatic. You're going to go through again.
Counselor Rorschach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to staff, why isn't this a process?
Because it's a variance.
It's just a variance.
Because we're not amending the plan.
We're not amending any plans?
We're not amending OCP, the bylaw zoning, if it's into the grand zoning, we're just varying it. And that doesn't require a public hearing.
Right.
At this point, the discussion can be can be deferred. We can I'll just need a minute on that.
Because the same property was given a variance before to build a woodshed, and this is what we end up in our backyard.
Hold on a second, counsel. Can we have a permission to go ahead with this extraordinary situation where we listen to this gentleman?
This is what we look at every day under our backyard. That's we built a woodshed.
Hold on a second, sir. Is that okay with counsel? Do we do we do we just hear this gentleman?
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, we're waiting for it, but is it okay that you go ahead and speak?
Yes.
Okay, so counsel's in agreement that you go ahead and explain your situation.
I live two doors over, and his house is at the back of a lot, and he has a bunch of equipment. And my front yard, every time I'll be looking out from the road and from the my property, and I don't think we want shops in front of our in front of our lots in the city. That's my that's my concern. And I don't want to be this is going to tower over the next-door house and everything, because he already has his land built up three or four feet above everybody else's. And the house next door is just a little house, and he's going to have a shop 20 feet high, so it's going to be 24 feet above the rest of our property, and we're going to have to look at that for the rest of our life. And I don't think that is proper.
Mr. Mayor.
If I have to put my shop in the back.
Could we get a resumé of what we're seeing?
I did have.
Oh, because we have that.
They have the same picture as mentioned.
There was a.
Yes.
So, we're really comfortable bearing the we're really comfortable bearing the zone. One thing we could do is if we want to, we can rescind the motion. We could rescind the motion and table it.
Okay, counsel, the motion that we just made, I'm recommending that we rescind it, table it until there is an opportunity for our staff to look at the situation closer. Motion to rescind the previous motion, Counselor Rorschach. Any discussion? This is an unusual situation. It doesn't seem to be covered in that we were not required to go to a public hearing on this, but in the interest of good governance.
The gentleman said he received a letter?
Yeah, saying to from the city.
From the city.
Okay.
Right here.
That would just be that letter would be the one that would be for what was typically to neighbors when there is a variance, so they have the opportunity to put it in writing and speak to council. Generally, we receive those in writing from the from the proponent. But in this situation, the planning department, the manager was away, and the technician sent out the letter. So, we can get we can deal with this in the next couple days and get back to council.
All right. So, the motion is to rescind the previous motion and to go ahead and give this gentleman the opportunity to present his case to staff members and then to bring it back at a later date.
So, how do I go about I just moved down here and stuff a couple years ago?
I would suggest that you you meet with our administrator, Mr. Allen, and that you bring something in writing to him in terms of your concerns. But we're opening up the floor. I don't think we can do that at this point. The motion on the floor is to rescind the previous motion. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay.
Thanks for speaking up.
Are we going to push the motion to floor to table this until the next council?
I thought that was the one we just did, the rescinding and tabling of the.
Okay, yes, okay.
And who made that motion? Counselor Smith made it, with the second or Counselor Rorschach?
Sure, your worship. Could you be informed of that meeting so he can be present, please?
When he's meeting?
When this comes forward again?
Yeah, well, this is meeting with the.
Yeah, we'll just back things up and inform everyone. Counselor Krog.
I think the gentleman is wanting to be able to participate and with the other gentleman and staff.
Well, and I think that we've opened that up so that our administrator would deal with it.
So, the other gentleman would then be informed of the under.
Mr. Mayor, if the if the one proponent would like to meet and he feels comfortable having other people join in on the meeting that he's having with staff, that'd be fine. But if there is not an appetite for the one one customer to meet with in a group setting, I don't think we should. I think we can meet separately and deal with the issue.
Okay, and I think this is under the control of our administrator. Okay, moving forward. We are on to information items. And I have a motion to dispose of these as we see appropriate. Counselor Smith, Counselor Kendall, and going down the list. A thank you card from GFSS, received for information. Great picture of Counselor Doherty. A thank you card from the Boundary Museum Society for 2013 funding. Correspondence from Oscar Purstig, requesting two-lane bowling at City Park. Pretty skinny little letter, but hopefully we'll get the wheels rolling here in terms of looking at that issue for Oscar and his group. Correspondence from the Grand Forks Recreation Commission, asking the city to proceed with meeting with the commission and the school board to work out a shared use agreement. I wasn't at this meeting, Counselor Rorschach was.
It's come so many times that I'm 100% sure, which means this came up at to send a letter, because it was ongoing. Well, as you know, each and every meeting we had in the last year, this topic has come up. And actually, I believe it was you that actually made the motion. You read that here. You made the motion. You asked me with you. Press my positive.
Well, I, you know, I know that at this point in time, the shared use issue has been at the table, and so let me clarify that with the Recreation Commission before we go too much further with this. This was from the chairman of that group to the city formally, and so I'll follow up on that with Gene Roberts and see where that went, why it came forward the way it did.
Okay.
Okay. Correspondence from the Winnipeg Squadron Canadian Forces advising that Chief Warrant Officer Terrence Lee Duty is retiring in our area, requesting a welcome letter from council for his contribution to service. And I think quite appropriately that we pass a motion to welcome Clarence and his family to our community. So, move Counselor Wires, Counselor Smith. Any discussion? Those of you that read his contribution to the forces, the chief warrant officer, he played a major role in forces. Good to have him on board. All those in favor? And correspondence from the B.C. Dogwood Club, again, basically appreciating the response that they've had to our community, other than a few big businesses. They were very welcome in our community and felt that they were appreciated for their business. And advertising funding request of $500 from the border Bruins for on-ice advertising. I'm assuming that this would give us an opportunity to put up our new logo on the ice surface or on the boards. Counselor Rorschach.
Yeah, well, in the past, we have done it. It was on the ice itself.
Right, on the ice.
It was on the ice. It wasn't a board there. It was on the ice, and it was on both sides of center, and it looked quite nice. It's a city of Grand Forks. We'll get a chance to do it on the ice. Once again, with the new logo, I think that'd be quite catchy, and against the opposing team and their fans and family and the players for the Grand Forks. Whatever Bruins did to VR for Grand Forks, the one there, Brent, the family from the town, too, they have a chance to.
Want to make that motion?
Yeah, I would.
And seconded by Counselor Doherty. Any further discussion? This is right on the ice. I'm not familiar with that.
It was. It has been the past, so I can't say like 90% certainty, but it always has been.
Okay. All those in favor, opposed, carried. The next item of business, again, is another request for funding from the Grand Forks Call Fair to sponsor a mini chuck wagon, which we did with our previous logo on last year's miniature chuck wagon. So, again, this is a $500 advertising cost. And I think it requires a separate motion. Doherty, Counselor Rorschach, Counselor Smith, seconds. And discussion?
Now, is this does this proceed as is this advertising or is it could be seen as a grant to me?
I think advertising.
That's the way you write it in the land.
Mr. Allen?
I think it's part of our brand management, getting our brand out there. It's part of the ongoing development of the brand management plan. This is an example of how it will evolve because council may say that they're processing this message out there.
So, does council have an opportunity to get on the the actual truck wagon, the key chairs, handing out candy, sir?
No, I don't think we got to writing last year. There were some offers, but it's only it's a one-man show, right? The driver is the truck wagon.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty dangerous.
It's my mental.
Question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Rotary Club, Kettle River, hosting the Free Public Workshop tomorrow night on drip irrigation. Anyone who's interested and receive for irrigation.
You have to be registered.
You have to be registered.
Yeah, it's an online registration.
Oh, so it's too late now?
Probably is.
That's for drip irrigation.
Tomorrow night.
Okay, well, if you have trouble getting on there, let me know. I have some poll with Graham, but I was planning to attend. And meeting information with Premier Clark and Cabinet Ministers, we have listed those meetings that we are in the process of requesting infrastructure, deer issues, the highway corridor, Highway 3 corridor, and the Columbia Plaza. It's a letter from the City of Trail regarding power prices in Fortis service area. Received for information. Any comments on that, that they're complaining about the cost of power? I'm not sure what they expected us to do on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we've had this discussion with meetings with Fortis in February. This is to help just getting to to the to this double city book, because we do our bulk purchase. It becomes a relationship between B.C. High School and Fortis. So, essentially, we're already ahead of that. So, from our perspective, we had that discussion regarding our rate increase and dealing with that, meeting up with the Fortis expectations.
Right.
Your worship. I'm still hearing a lot of folks who suggest that, you know, Fortis has kept their rates the same and that the city is the one that's jacking it up. What to what extent are we educating our customers that we're actually under Fortis rates and that we only raise our rates when Fortis raises theirs? Because I think, you know, there's some urban lending out there that we're just we're just setting the rates and we don't care what Fortis says and whatnot, which is clearly not the case. But I hear a fair amount, and I'm just wondering to what extent we are educating.
Is that maybe a newsletter item that we could incorporate in a newsletter, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that was raised by council during the strategic planning update was the communications. One of the things that we are going to be doing this year is developing a communication strategy regarding the electrical utility, as particular one we're doing right now with the water utility with conservation. One of the plans is for 2013. One of the plans is for 2013, or 2014, is the communications on the electrical utility. We do have a council policy that requires us to be within 98% of the Fortis rates, so that's a policy that we follow, based on the guidance of our electrical utility engineer, Alex.
Is there a literature that, you know, myself as a councilman can provide to critical customers?
We do have a policy, I guess you could show them that, a written policy.
But we will have more for council coming up here, we're working on that right now, just as we went through the energy diet piece, and as a follow-up with that information going out there, we want to keep kind of the ball rolling on that information going out to our customers.
I just prefer to not be beaten before that.
Okay, well, we'll make a point of further education for you. And we're moving on to Counselor Crogg.
Okay, just because that's where it looks like we're going to buy laws now.
We are, yes.
Just to go back, I guess, to the request for the letter for the chief warrant officer who's retiring here. Counselor Wires and I, today we're up at Memorial for Don Gordon, and I was wondering if it would be possible if we would write a letter recognizing his contribution to our community.
Don Gordon?
Yeah. Yeah, because he was instrumental in both him and, you know, working with the nightlights and, you know, getting our aviation.
In all of our work.
Yeah, so it would be nice to.
Counselor Wires?
Well, I attended the celebration for Don today as well. It was quite a decorated career that Don had, and finishing his years here in Grand Forks in 1997, we all came to the community, our families came here to sing on. And notably, the family is actually very interested in maybe having a placard or a group of trees or an idea that the city might have in recognition of Don that they'd be willing to pay for as well, wherever we felt it would be fitting. Whether it's a small group of trees, they felt that trees are more permanent than a bench, so if we have a future development area that we're working on this summer, they'd be very interested in knowing that they can pay for either a group of trees. They've done this on the Rideau Canal in Ottawa for Don's brother, who passed away a couple of years ago, and it's just an idea that the family would like to bring forward.
Would it be possible to get Anne to come forward and discuss that with our city staff in terms of a planking of some kind? Could you take that initiative to ask her to come forward?
Choosing a location with the city.
Well, yeah, to talk about the cost of it and location and things like that. Okay, thank you.
And so, the letter?
The letter of support?
No, the letter of recommendation for his, or recognition of his contribution to our community.
Could we wrap that into the same plan here, so that we put the letter as part of that?
No, I think the letter should go first and the other part would just follow after.
Well, we could if we were doing that as part of his.
I'm thinking it's going to be an awful lot of work for staff, if Anne could bring forward that information about his past record, that would give us the body of the letter that we would be sending or that would be, you know, recommend or recognizing his past.
It's all covered in here.
Yeah.
It sounds weird to ask her to help us write a letter.
Gene, can I ask Mr. Allen for some assistance on this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I think one of the things that we could do is from the feedback from maybe the council is that maybe we've known him or maybe understand the participation or the recognition that we're looking for here, that we could, we could develop a very respectful letter to send to the family, so.
Maybe you start the wheels in motion for the idea.
Yeah, we could draft up a letter, then we could maybe, maybe if there was a council resolution for that, then what we could do is maybe within that resolution, we could talk to, you know, to council that knew him and then we could see if that would.
Anne Gordon, his wife, was a councilor, so she's very comfortable with the city council business.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we, I think what they're comparing to the council is that maybe we would develop it and then, you know, if everybody felt comfortable with it, then it would go out to her. So if that would be the case, and if we had a resolution, then we could work with Counselor Wires and Crogg to do that.
Okay, Counselor Crogg? Making the resolution?
Go ahead.
Okay, so moved.
And I'll say.
Okay, and a motion? A motion for?
Yes, to.
To write a letter to develop some recognition?
Yes.
And we'll review it with Counselor Wires and Crogg.
All right. Has the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. And finally, before we move to bylaws, we need to vote on the disposition of the information items. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. And on to bylaws, the first one is the final reading of one that we've already given first, second, and third reading to in the past. This is a flat tax on 79th Avenue Road Electrical Service Area, and I have a motion for a final reading. Counselor Smith, Counselor O'Doherty? Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried? Okay, and get back on track here. Now, we are going to go through a number of repealing bylaws here, and I'm going to read some of this so that we don't get confused like I have in the past. So we are repealing bylaw number 1979, 1980, 1981, 1982, 1983, 1985, and 1986, intending to repeal redundant bylaws. So on the far right-hand column, we have the list of the bylaws, and what I'm asking is, will we require a separate motion on each of the bylaws, or can this be done?
Yes, we'll require one, a separate motion for bylaw 1979, a separate motion for bylaw 1980.
And this is final reading?
Final reading.
Counselor Smith?
So moved.
Okay, let's do them by numbers so we don't get confused. 1979, final reading, Counselor Smith, Counselor Shaggin. All those in favor?
Let's make discussion, just checking.
Moving down to bylaw number 1980. That Kendall, Counselor Crogg, all those in favor? Moving to bylaw 1981. Counselor Wires, Counselor Shaggin, all those in favor? Bylaw number 1982, just writing it around, Counselor O'Doherty, Counselor Smith, all those in favor? And we are down to 1983. So moved. Reading, Counselor Shaggin, Counselor Kendall, all those in favor? 1985. Counselor Wires, Counselor Smith, all those in favor? 1986. Counselor O'Doherty, Counselor Smith, if you've known the record, all those in favor? Okay, that includes our repeals. And now we're going to move on to new, new bylaws, this is putting in place, new bylaws, so this is final reading on bylaws that we're putting into place. Traffic regulation, bylaw number 1956, final reading. Counselor Crogg, Counselor Wires, all those in favor? Bylaw number 1957. Counselor Smith, Counselor Shaggin, all those in favor? Bylaw number 1959, park access bylaw. Counselor O'Doherty, Counselor Smith, all those in favor? Bylaw number 1962. Counselor Kendall?
62?
Counselor Wires? Yes, 1962, all those in favor? And 1963. Counselor O'Doherty, Counselor Kendall?
I'd like to speak this.
All those in?
I'd like to speak this.
Yes? 63.
Yes, it is. I wasn't here at the previous meeting in the morning, but you were, you tried to push us along, so we've got these done reports for months. Top of my head, as it's not attached here, the question I have is when Mr. Copan was speaking to us in regards to these new bylaws, he may mention, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the weekend noise limits or restrictions are going to be different on the weekends than during the day, is that correct? Was he, the noise bylaw isn't effect weekdays from what time to what time? You can't be allowed after 10 until what time and what?
I'd have to go back into that particular moment. There were restrictions on power tools on, or some, on different days, on Sundays?
Yeah, I believe there was a later start time on the weekend, 10 o'clock, something like that, as opposed to 8 o'clock.
So getting to your concern?
My concern is that I've got actually a lot of flack in regards to this, being that a lot of people nowadays like to do a lot of home improvements themselves, do it yourselves, and a lot of that comes when they're not at work, which is different the year, Saturday and Sunday. And a lot of those folks are concerned that they won't be able to start their own improvements, whether it's really new debt, playing up the events, any kind of exterior work, possibly some interior work until later in the day as opposed to starting, you know, in the morning as if they wanted a normal workday, and they would have to wait until 10 to start their improvements or DIY jobs.
So let me clarify what I think is going on here, that we are in fact simply lining these up with our municipal ticketing bylaw and putting dollars behind issues and violations. And so for us to go back and review our noise control bylaw can be done at a future date, but it's not the intent of this process.
Of course it's the intent of this process, that's why you have first, second, third, and by law.
Yes, I know, but we haven't done that with any of the other bylaws. There's many other concerns that we could have if we were going to also readjust some of the wording and the rules that we've established within these bylaws.
But, but Mr. Mayor, isn't it our jobs that if you have concerns or if people raise concerns, that we bring them forward? It isn't our job to do that.
No, I'm saying that's not been the way we've dealt with all of these changes, but you are within your rights to ask for clarification of this bylaw since we are putting it in final reading.
And that's what we're asking for clarification.
I understand you are. And Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, the regular, the weekend hours for construction are, as put in there, between 10 a.m. and 9 p.m., and on Sunday from 10 to 6 p.m. The reason that is, is so people have the ability to have enjoyment of their homes on the weekends, to be free from the regular construction hours, that they start at 7 a.m. or is outlined in the regular hours during the week. So they'll be free from those, you know, the ability for people to be pounding and bashing and equipment to be in the yard for regular construction to be underway during the weekend days, so they have the ability to have some reprieve from the construction, just like we would do for our customers when we're doing construction of heavy equipment through a neighborhood. So it's basically a courtesy to extend back to the residential customers to realize that there is going to be construction impact, but we just, you know you'll have a window of reprieve on the weekends.
Right. Counselor Crogg?
And, I guess, and yet, industry in this bylaw runs 24 hours a day. So there's no restrictive time limits on what they do or the amount of noise that they produce. There's a thing that says that they would work with the city to mitigate, but now we're saying that my neighbor can't, or is off until 10 o'clock.
As a courtesy to them?
As a courtesy to me, and yet, industry can do whatever they want 24 hours a day.
Counselor Wires?
Well, I just know, you know, we do have clause 6.2, that if the restrictions contained in this part may be waived or varied by a permitting writing from the bylaw enforcement officer. If it's found to be in case of urgent necessity and in the interest of public health and safety, so there is.
Flexibility.
There is some flexibility there.
But you have to get a permit.
That's correct.
Counselor Shaggin?
Yeah, and I don't believe that a DIY job would fall into any of those categories of public health or safety or urgent necessity, but I know personally doing work on my own house, it's quite warm come 10 o'clock in the afternoon, 12 o'clock in the morning this time of year if you want to do some work, and not everybody in this world works Monday to Friday, so we're actually working weekends and then have our weekends in the weekend section.
Okay, so you're free to vote against this final reading? And can I ask who put this on the table, 1963? I'm sorry, I've lost track. Who made the motion?
Counselor O'Doherty.
Counselor O'Doherty made the motion, seconded by?
Counselor Kendall.
Counselor Kendall. Okay, so this is for final reading of 1963. All those in favor? Both. And a non-vote is a favor?
Non-vote in favor.
Yes, okay, so motion passes.
Okay, and can we change that 10 to 10, either one or the other, on C and D?
Is there a typo there?
Sure.
Okay, minor typo correction.
Anne recorded.
Please. And, you know, I would encourage you, if you want to go back to look at this closer in the next while, let's put it back on the table for review.
For the bylaw itself?
For the bylaw itself, yes.
Because this is just about the municipal tax.
Well, we're trying to get dollars attached to misbehavior, to violations. Okay, so moving on to bylaw 1965, fire, light, safety bylaw. Counselor Shaggin, Counselor Smith? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. All right, and we have two late items to deal with this evening. One is 12A, which is the Wildlife Aware Program. I would, this is a motion from this morning. Let me read what possible recommendation here. The result, the Committee of the Whole recommends to council to bring a recommendation from the Deer Committee, that council provide 1,500 in funds to support the Wildlife Aware Education Program to the June 10 regular council meeting.
15,000.
To the, yeah.
Support 1,500.
Oh, I see, okay, this was the motion that was referred to the June 24 meeting, so that's why it got delayed. Can we read that one more time?
Yeah.
This was from the Committee of the Whole this morning.
This morning?
Well, not actually, just.
This was a previous motion that was brought up and then changed to June 24th and got tabled.
It's booked for, yeah. Deferred listening here.
Right, so this was the previous resolution that recommended it to council, but we delayed it because Counselor Smith was.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so is that clear enough by leaving out that council approves providing a $1,500 in?
15,000?
$15,000 to support the Wildlife Aware Education Program, period? And we go ahead with Counselor Smith? You make that motion, and seconded by Counselor O'Doh, Counselor Shaggin? Discussion? Here we go, Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, just to reiterate from this morning, it goes to crap on me that they won't fund it, and yet they are the, want to be the two leads on deciding who's going to receive the money to do the program.
Right, so they're wanting control over it, but not participating?
But they don't want to open up, so there's two, and then they let us have a voice. Yay, so that's three.
Okay, so just summarizing your position, you'll be voting against it because of that. And further, Counselor Kendall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm not convinced that the education component without some teeth or penalties or something attached to it would necessarily be effective. I think that most people know they should feed wildlife and spending money to tell people to not do something they know fundamentally is wrong. And again, that's one aspect of it, and the other one is the participation in the government is key to taking this forward and being able to put any teeth behind it to make a change. to taking this work and then being able to put any teeth behind it to make a change. Teaching someone not to do anything and then breaking the rules without having any way to, I guess, drive the point home. I don't see that as a long-term positive solution, so I don't be voting for that.
Counselor Wires?
I too will not be voting in favor of it. I strongly believe that the Deer Committee and the ones prior to us that have been on City Council have worked diligently in this community to educate the people who are out there. The people who are out there that are feeding the deer now are going to continue feeding the deer. So we're already seeing a decline in the numbers or studying of the numbers of the deer, of the deer count. I strongly recommend that if we pass this today, we're just setting an example, a precedence for the provincial government. I'm adamant about pushing back, taking it to UBCM, taking it to the Minister, taking this plan that we have developed, this program, and showing it to them and saying, "We've done the work. You can contribute, you can distribute this to the rest of the province. Just give us a little bit of money to work with it, to get it out there."
Share the cost.
And share the cost. We're willing to share the cost. We're not willing to share it to take on all of it.
Counselor Rishagin?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I wasn't going to speak to this again, but I will be supporting this motion. To me, the whole notion of we're not going to do something because the government downloaded onto us, it is nothing new. They've been doing that since the 1980s when the federal organs started downloading onto the provincial government, and in the mid-'90s when the province started downloading to the hunting municipalities. The municipality is nothing. We are a creation of the province. They can do whatever it is they want to do. We're not mentioning the Constitution anywhere. We are what we are. In the late 2000s, liberal government, like I mentioned before, back in a point in time, deer were a provincial legislated by the province. They were the same as a bear and everything else. And it was the late 2000s when they started saying that municipalities, that they started downloading. So this is not a new idea, this downloading. And I don't think by us going to speak to them like UBCM is going to change anything. The fact that it's been went on for 30 years, I was going to say, hey, you know, you're downloading, what are they going to say? Yeah, we have been. I don't think it's a good enough argument. I support this.
Okay, I'll hold and see if there are other speakers before coming back to you. Counselor Wires, Counselor Smith?
You know, I mean, the argument already, of course, the Deer Committee has been in, you know, it's been a committee for many years already. And it's been certainly the voice of residents, that they want something done about this issue. And we can't continue to sit on our hands waiting for someone else to give us the money in order to move forward with what we have to do. Certainly, you know, this is the easier answer, or one of the easier answers in a multi-pronged approach to dealing with the issue that, you know, it's not, we're not asking for cull money here. We're asking for an opportunity to educate the public. And if we can tie this in with the municipal ticketing bylaw, where we are giving teeth to city staff and bylaw enforcement officers to find people who are in contravention of the bylaw, which we already have in place, I think, you know, the education component is going to play a significant role in furthering this, furthering some resolutions forward in this deer issue.
And I'd like to support the fact that the education program is more than just dealing with telling people not to feed the deer. It's a fairly comprehensive program that deals with everything from signage to, you know, helping with fencing, various other kinds of things that could be done. So I do support the movement. And Counselor Wires?
Well, you just opened up a very good discussion. If you drive down the back lanes, ground forks, as much as I have, and accompanied with some of the Deer Committee people who have been counting deer, there's just about, there's a fortune in fencing out there already. I mean, they are, everybody is at that point.
Which is why the deer feeders say they're not getting enough food.
I'm just going to reiterate. If it's just as easy, oh, they've been doing it since the downloading since then, well, let's just go along with it. Just seriously think about it. This is, this is a small pushback where you're giving them an opportunity to be a partner.
Clear position. Counselor Crone?
Yeah, the way it is now to support the educational program and stuff, basically, and it is more than just deer, like we're focusing on deer, but it's all wildlife. Along with Counselor Kendall, I believe that people know they shouldn't be feeding wild animals, right? And if you start an educational program that says, "Don't feed wild animals, this is what can happen to the animal," they'll keep feeding them. If you say an educational program that says, "This is what it's going to cost you if you continue to feed wild animals," because it's tied in to municipal ticketing, that's education, not, "Please don't feed the deer. Don't feed the deer, or this is going to happen."
If you don't get the logic, then it's going to need to pass this, but...
Yeah, but that's not part of it. Have we spoken our piece?
Yeah.
Counselor Wires?
Well, I just wanted to add one more thing. There was a stack of brochures in our council room that were printed probably two years ago, and they were distributed throughout the community. I took that, I took some of that stack and I took it out to the flower mill because we do have deer that are out there. So they're there for the visitors and that, when they do arrive. So they're aware of our deer in our community. So once again, you know, we've published brochures in the past, and they're still out there.
Thank you. Counselor Kendall, wrap it up.
I think that the ticketing bylaw will be the single best, fastest educator out there.
Okay, but on the table at this point is whether we do or do not proceed. The motion is on the table. Are you ready for the question? This is to implement the animal or the Wildlife Aware Program with a focus on deer, and it would employ a person part-time in our community to begin this program fairly quickly. I guess the implementation would be... Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, would you like your name supported?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Crone?
One thing I didn't see there that just struck me is that the provincial government isn't willing to fund the specific program. There's other areas of the provincial government and federal government that fund Java opportunities. So you can get wage enhancement and stuff like that. So if we're proceeding with this, which we are, because this council said that they are, they're going to put this money in, we should be talking to community futures to see if there is funding so that if you're going to do it again, do it right and get twice the bang for the buck out of it.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one thing in here with the funding being allocated by council, what we will do as staff, the providers of the program, if there is any financial opportunities this year, we, or if they're wanting to, please look into things a little bit further. We would encourage that they do take those steps for us to see if there is any access to funding at this point. Now that the City Council's made a commitment to do this, let's ask them to see if they have any funding for the table as well.
And wage stuff, city funding?
Whatever we could multiply our efforts with. Okay, and we have one other item, 12B. This was a presentation this morning by Chris Maslin in the Trail Society. Be resolved that Council direct staff to research possibility of utilizing and supplying its own crush gravel base to the city's portion of the trail project and to bring back a report to council regarding cost savings. So even though we haven't made a decision on it, we would get a cost estimate of what it would be with our participation of Crush. So Counselor Smith makes the motion. Counselor Wires, seconded. Discussion, Counselor?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a presentation. Counselor Maslin.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
And then I was over here and he's not here. And when he was doing that presentation this morning, he had his top portion with his numbers, and he had the bottom portion with his numbers. The top numbers, I believe, on the PowerPoint were that one kilometer stretch. I think he said. What were the bottom numbers? Is he looking for the city from the rate to the bridge itself and that little stretch beyond?
To share the cost.
But why was it two numbers? Why were the two numbers?
One was provincial, one was city.
Mr. Allen?
Counselor Mayor, telling the question, he is only looking for us to look at putting our, the city funding, the city portion of the one.
1.04.
The one, 1.04, 09.
Yes, because he did the two numbers and then the final total. And I thought he was asking.
He was adding the 0.5 after. That's what I was, thought he was speaking to.
But we could save considerable money if the city could do the crushing.
That's what we're going to find out, yes. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda.
We haven't voted.
Oh, on this one? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor? And so we're down to questions and input from the public. We're open to questions. Gentlemen?
Mr. Ronning? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, with regard to the traffic regulation.
Yes.
I notice in that that the speed limit within the city is still 50. Why?
Because we've established it at that... Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, all streets are identified at 50-kilometer speed limits unless otherwise posted in municipalities and all municipalities. It's a standard that is recognized across BC. We have, the council has the ability to alter speed limits, but you would get, you would want an engineering report to further identify why you would alter that speed.
Either up or down?
Either up or down, but you would generally stay within the 50-k speed limit. So that's a universal speed limit in municipalities.
And through school zones, it's 30. So Mr. Ronnigan, your point?
Just to comment on that.
Yes.
I would invite the council, you and the council, to visit Second Street between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning or to walk the trail along Riverside Drive most times of the day. Second Street becomes a Speedway in the morning.
Ken, the RCMP asked me periodically if there are places that they would like to concentrate or we would like them to concentrate on. I've avoided doing that because it's been very unpopular for us to target specific areas. As you remember, when they targeted the USCC Hall area a few years back, it was very controversial. But in fact, on council's recommendation, we could certainly identify Second Street at 7:00 in the morning and ask for some attention to that by the RCMP. Would that be of any interest to council?
Certainly.
Do you believe that that would be productive?
Yeah, well, as part of Citizens on Patrol, we do speed work.
Yes.
And we've been out on Second. We were down at 7:00 in the morning because I guess what you have is, it's really a wide open street. And they're pushing to work, they're pushing to work is what they're doing, yeah.
You have at that time in the morning, you have people going to work.
Actually, the biggest concern, the biggest concern right now is actually right up here. 72nd coming down over the hill, over here, because it's blind almost. They are speeding on.
Okay, and dealing with this matter, if you nod your heads, I'll bring it to Mr. or to Staff Sergeant Harris's attention, and he can direct some staff, some time in the traffic division to that, to those streets. I wonder if I could consult with our CAO on that matter first and define what we would ask. I've never done this before, ask for attention to speed limits.
We could definitely ask that the RCMP does pay periodic special attention to specific times to certain areas of our community, as well within our prerogative as a service provided.
He has offered that. Counselor Smith?
I'd always like to mention that there's a resolution coming forward at UBCM, as far as I know, to reduce the speed limit on highways that pass through communities from 50 to 40. So if they're looking at reducing speed through on highways in communities like on Central Avenue from 50 to 40.
All right. Mr. Ronnigan, addressing those two concerns, are you pleased with our adjudication?
A quick question about the waste recycling containers. Did anyone think of those as water collectors? They don't have a roof. They don't have a top. They're funnels. The waste containers downtown, the new ones, in fact, all of them.
All the recycle ones, Roy, the black ones.
The black waste containers.
The ones we just put up? Mr. Allen?
Oh, those? That was the design that we selected, and we didn't feel as though that was going to be much of an impact. Periodically, the bags do have some water in them, but the guys do, they can put, they drain them more. It's not an issue. It's one of the, one of the bigger issues is access for the containers. And they are fairly high, so by putting a container, a roof on the top would actually make them a little bit, they've been created in problematic ways. So...
Anyway, I guess the city staff will have to evaluate that and maybe assess that.
Well, certainly, if it's a problem, we'll know about it over the next little while, but we may get some green credits for saving rainwater. Okay.
Last week, I visited Southern Vancouver Island, and in particular went to Shemainus and Coombs. And when I read the marketing statement, the long marketing statement in the report this morning, I thought of original peaceful living and whether anything permanent can be done within the city to market that. Relate that to Shemainus. You don't have to go to a museum in Shemainus to get the history of that town. Every building has a mural, a piece of history, and the street is marked so that you can follow a certain trail and...
All right, they've done a fabulous job.
They have. But, you know, I keep hearing, "Original peaceful living." And I ask that question again. What does it mean to a visitor? I know something about it because I read that stuff.
So referring this to our active committee and the management of their brand?
Yeah, absolutely, and your worship, we have, we have had that discussion about the table, timing in the heritage element to the possibility of murals and whatnot through, to the blank campuses we have throughout our city.
Final question, Mr. Mayor. With regard to floodplain building.
Yes.
Has the city or will the city be giving any consideration to picture building regulations on floodplains? I think of Calgary, no one ever thought that there might be a storm like they had to raise the river like it was. They have now started developing new regulations to floodplain.
To a 200-year floodplain approach. Mr. Allen, are we planning any changes to our floodplain?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the, I believe there are already some regulations in place that capacity to the underdevelopments and industry services. But I believe that the regional district, and there is, there's like, there's some in our bylaw as well. Yeah.
We're required to build a floodplain.
So we have established a floodplain, and that's our monitoring. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ronnigan. Mr. James?
Good evening, worship counselors. I've got a couple of points, actually, more than a couple, but I'll try and keep it short because I know that you like to cut me off.
Yes, I do.
The first point I'd like to make is I'm delighted with the enhancement of the flowers and the pots and all the rest of it and the walkways on Highway 3 and downtown. It looks tremendous. I think it's really excellent. And now, in fact, perhaps we could... I think it's really excellent, and now, in fact, perhaps we could make do or move it. The next step is give the bylaw enforcement officer a task to get sort out the unsightly premises, which rather detract from that good view that we have as we go down Highway Three.
So, you see that we have attached that final reading to unsightly premises, so there are dollar values attached to the legislation.
Indeed, yes, yeah, and, yeah, it's a good job that the bylaw enforcement officer will be able to run around very quick and raise lots of money for the city, and they're running it the same way as Detroit.
I hope it's going to be tempered with an approach that gives an opportunity for people to change and respond to the new regulations that was down.
Indeed, I hope so, and include the traffic bylaw, because I'm afraid I offered an apology, I was going to get my red pen out, which I did do. Unfortunately, I only got through the first two pages of it. I found it looks like five typographical errors and three potential typographical errors, and four definitions perhaps need to be reviewed, but that was only on the first two pages.
So, Nigel, could you pass that on to us for review rather than attempting to?
I need to get my red pen.
Yes.
Out again. Anyway, number two is the deer committee, et cetera. Those who read papers will see that deer proofing obey in BC have got a problem in Vancouver Island. Deer proofing, a good article, and in fact, the sum of the article is that they now, that policy is, it is fair to say the process we're using right now is culled by car.
Yes, darker, which we do.
Unfortunately, indeed, I saw two carcasses on Highway Three last week. They are very fortunate, their figures are only about thirteen so far this year. They haven't got a problem, they've got so.
You kill approximately two hundred in, on our highway stretches surrounding the city.
And Invermere and so on, they're equally as bad, I'm quite sure. The next one is, you mentioned that the BMX, and obviously somebody from the council went down to view the BMX at some time during the period, which was excellent, I think, because tourism is one of our main aspects, I believe. The BMX has been going as I know for eight-plus years. I know nothing really about the BMX, except that the city very kindly leased the land to the BMX Association, and probably a dollar a year or something like that, and they look after it, and they've done all the improvements, et cetera. And what is of note, I believe, is that it's considered to be, this is perhaps by a biased opinion from a certain person I spoke to, the best BMX track in the province, and they like coming here. Likewise, the BC seniors championship, cycling championship was held this last weekend as well. It's a three-day event. It's been held for at least seven or so years, and the combination of those two events with funding coming in, the funding payment into the city is probably something like twenty-six thousand dollars came into the city, which wouldn't normally come along. But I feel that we are letting ourselves down by not going out and welcoming visitors to our city, and it doesn't have to be on a formal basis, it could be informal or whatever, or alternatively, it should be perhaps from City Hall, an inquiry into the organizers, say, "Would you like somebody to come down, make a speech, make the presentations, give the prizes, whatever?" Or just keep away, or mind our own business. But it seems that there has been no sort of positive action by City Hall towards those two events this last weekend, and there are many others, I'm sure, many weekends that have come around. And I feel that we're missing something very much, so, because if we get the message out, "We care and we're delighted to see you," the numbers will increase.
Thank you, Nigel. I think that's an excellent idea that we discuss further as a group, whether or not we did want some kind of formalized welcoming of various events that come to now. Thank you.
And the last one I'd like to make, really, I think, should have been the first item on the agenda, and that was a motion to welcome the birth of our future monarch. Three times, her majesty's picture will unfortunately be replaced the third time. I don't think I'll be here, although someone said if you live long enough, you might get there, but they are also living longer as well, so, but I really feel that it was out of courtesy, nothing else. If nothing else is but out of courtesy, then we should have done something about that to acknowledge that. The other thing is to mention is page A nineteen, I believe it is, and, sorry, A nine in the National Post, this Sunday.
The deer.
The article, there are other articles I've got. I mentioned another one, which I won't mention.
Counselor, do you want to do anything formal in terms of the new baby's birth, or would you wait till his name is announced, possibly?
I heard it was going to be Bob.
Okay, I think that it might be appropriate for us to do it at a future meeting, that would welcome the new prince. All right, thank you. And further from the gallery.
I'd rather just one-on-one, that's.
Okay. Catch him after the meeting. That's it? Motion to adjourn? So, gallery.